Good evening. We're going to get started in a few minutes, but could I have the candidates for Honesdale Borough Council join me up at the podium, please?
Thank you so much for participating in this. I'm sure I've already gone over this. You can either pass on your platform and talk about it, or you can either like to talk about it. Although your vote should be taken, that won't happen in a random order. Decided by drawing a couple of names. Adrian though. It's all good. Grab it. I'll go. Also, here we go. Make sure I have the presentation right. Larissa Ann Llewellyn. Joseph Meili. And is that how you pronounce your name?
Yeah, that's great.
Patrick Rusty. Yes. Jamie Cordaro. No, let me see. Ah, that is my.
Thank you so much for being here this evening. My name is Liam Mayo. I'm the news editor with the River Reporter newspaper. We just wanted to do this event to give the voters of Honesdale a little bit of additional information about the people who they're going to be voting for come November's election. Just a couple of preliminary things before we get started. Thank you all so much for coming out to this event. It's really crucial to participate in our democracy, especially at the local level. Thank you to the candidates for coming out to participate in something like this. I know it isn't always the easiest thing in the world, but I really appreciate your part in the process. The run of show tonight, we are going to start with the Borough Council candidates. They're going to each come up here and give a five-minute presentation about themselves and their platform. The order that they will speak in has been just now chosen by drawing little slips of paper out of a hat. Then we will have about a five, maybe a little bit more intermission to reset the room before we get started with the mayoral section of the debate, this discussion, apologies. The mayoral candidates will be able to participate in a bit of a Q and A. We've, prior to this event, selected questions from the community, and we have a list of questions already written up. We were able to do that for the mayoral debate, the mayoral discussion, rather than the candidates' discussion for the Borough Council, just because there were eight Borough Council candidates, and to do a full question and answer period with eight candidates would have taken us all night, which we unfortunately do not have. So, that's why the format is the way it is. Couple of last reminders. We've asked all candidates to please stay respectful and to talk about the issues rather than address their other candidates in a derogatory fashion. Practical reminder, we've got a lot of cables in this general area, and please, if you are walking in this general area, be very mindful of the cables so that you do not trip. And then the last reminder is just vote. In any election that comes up, it's really crucial for the proper functioning of our democracy that we all have a voice in it, especially for the local elections. I know it can sometimes be more tempting to vote in sort of the higher-profile national races than your local races, but it's your local races where your vote really has a lot of weight to it, and your participation in that can really change how your life operates on a very local level. So, without further ado, we will start this evening's proceedings by bringing up Borough Council candidate Joseph Meili.
Good evening all. Thanks for coming here today. My name's Joe Lesanne Meili. I'm living in Honesdale. I'm on Ridge Street, up the hill. And what I'd like to discuss is certain things I've found out just walking around the neighborhood, meeting people, saying hello, and being a neighbor. Okay, so the first thing I really want to discuss is elderly care. It seems that a lot of people here are of an age where they can't get rid of certain issues that neighbors have, or they have themselves. TVs, refrigerators, air conditioners, just say, and they leave it to the side of the house. It's sometimes an eyesore, and it's maybe not the borough's issue, but I think help in that would be very much accepted and appreciated. They're supposed to be, if you have the money, you can pay for it. Well, not, they all don't have the money, and a lot of them are living on fixed incomes. So I think anything the borough could do to help them, and maybe for a slight such stipend, maybe ten, fifteen, twenty bucks, that they can get a refrigerator off of their property and dispose of property at the recycling center. Okay? If that can be accomplished with time, as usual, that's something that I would, I think, would be really good to do. Number two for me is traffic safety. Being on Ridge Street, there's traffic coming down from the school that speed, and I'm not naming anybody, particularly because I really don't know, but whoever does come home from school, I know they're in a hurry, to dropping the children off, trying to get maybe a breakfast or go to work, and they have to go through Honesdale's traffic situation. Main Street is, you take your car and life in your hands trying to cross it during AM rush and PM rush. It's better to stay in. So some kind of signage. Now, signage here in Honesdale is a lot of signal signs with arrows and X's. I think people need to understand the language. One way, "Do not enter," I think would make more sense than an arrow with an X through it in a big circle, especially for some of the people in this area. Okay? Number two, the description of white lines. No one knows what a white line is for, to stop and maybe enter or exit an existing street. I hear there's a plan for maybe making some streets one-way. I would like that to come to fruition, just so it eases some traffic in trouble. Okay? Number three for me is trash behind buildings and businesses. It's very much an eyesore, coming down Chapel Street and turning and seeing all the trash on the streets. It's more behind the buildings. Supposedly, it's all the owner's issues to take care of that trash, but again, there's supposed to be an ordinance where that's supposed to be taken care of. I think the ordinance needs to be enforced and fines levied in a judicial manner for the people who are not taking care of their trash issues. Okay? Number four is transparency in the borough. You cannot read the borough notes until a month after the borough has a meeting. If you try to listen to the message, you cannot understand it because there's one microphone with six or seven people talking. So it's ridiculous to try and get this online and listen to see what is happening. I think that the minutes in today's culture should be able to be recorded, transcribed within 24 to 48 hours, and then a copy given in the borough's hallway where people can come and just read up. It doesn't have to be the resolution, but it could be what happened.
One minute.
Okay. I guess I'm going to end with saying this. If you enforce some of these ordinances, you will take care of a lot of these things, which people will know that the borough means business in doing. My final statement would be, I think it's necessary to maybe start a new base for the Borough Council, with a forward-thinking structure to do what we need to do and planning for the future needs. Thank you for your attendance, and my name is Joe. Let's see what happens.
Thank you. The next candidate to speak will be Larissa Ann Llewellyn.
So my name is Larissa Llewellyn. I have been a resident of Honesdale for the past five years, a Wayne County resident my entire life. Joe must be my neighbor, because I live right off of Ridge on Gravity Street, so I guess we'll be seeing each other. My background is predominantly in the construction industry. I have worked for Leeward and Pioneer since I was 18 years old. I currently serve as the Safety Director at Pioneer and R O W Resources. So, like Joe, my intention for Honesdale is to put safety first. We do have a lot of issues with our streets, with our crossings, ponding water, it's going to be winter soon, you know, we're going to have ice jams coming down Terrace Street with that silt sock sitting there if something doesn't start soon. I really don't have a lot more to say, because honestly, we're all going to be running for these positions, and like I said, I feel like safety is our number-one issue in Honesdale. And something needs to be done with, whether it's our Main Street having stop signs, I don't know if you all have been to Scranton, but you stop on every single corner there, regardless of where you're driving, and if it's not a stop sign, it's a red light. Something to just slow traffic down. And I think that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. The next candidate to speak will be William McAllister.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I'm looking forward to getting your vote this November, and hopefully I'll be able to continue some of the activity that I've started with the financial aspects of the borough. The challenges that we've confronted as far as raising money meant that the millage had to be increased two years in a row, which I was very upset about. At the same time, we've discussed the concept of the earned income tax more than once, and we finally have an organization called the Pennsylvania Economy League that has been conducting an evaluation not only of the finances, but of the operation of the borough as a whole, which includes the processes that we use to determine who's responsible for securing equipment and/or purchase orders and things of that nature. So the challenge here is making sure that the individuals who are requesting this are bringing the information to the respective committees, whether it's the Building and Streets Committee, or the Grants Committee, or all these different committees that we have, so that they can present their case on why the borough should incur that expense. The challenge then is, if we absolutely have the obligation to secure the equipment, is where's the money going to come from? And unfortunately, that means either the millage or the EIT have to be considered. So this coming year, we will be developing the 2026 budget, which we're in the process of doing, and hopefully, I have it in mind, and I know we are discussing, that there will be no millage increase, almost no matter what happens. So, however, the cost of securing the improved roads and the things that Mr. Meili and others would like to have, we have to either secure the money, I believe we're going to try to secure financing at the least expensive manner in a, what is known as a Penn Vest loan. That's one of the things that we can look at. That's a special organization that is used to giving money to government organizations, and they do so at a reduced rate, rather than having to go through your local banks and things of that nature. So that'll be all of the process that we're going through to try to discern how we're going to fix stormwater and flooding and all these other issues that we've been confronting over the last probably 10 or 15 years. And the problem is, we no longer are going to use Band-Aids. We're going to try to create a full fix. So, if any of you have any questions at this time, I'd be glad to entertain them. Nobody has a question? I guess I'll continue in respect to the fact that we are making honest efforts to minimize the cost to the citizens, at the same time maximize the benefit of what we fix or what we repair, so that the opportunity for the citizens to enjoy our community, which has been, I have to give a lot of credit to the G H P for its efforts to enhance the community, because they've been thoroughly involved in Wayne County tomorrow and in the rehabilitation of the Main Street. Not everybody likes some of the issues, but that's unfortunately a customary process. Yes?
One minute left.
Oh, okay. As I've said, we're going to try to create a balanced budget that will not require any increase in millage. So that's something that's nice news for tonight. Okay, thank you.
The next candidate to speak will be Kim Fish.
Good evening. I think we're all here because we love Honesdale. We want to see it grow, we want to see it progress, and so, and I generally care about Honesdale. It's people, it's heritage, and it's future. I've been a part of G H P Greater Honesdale Partnership since 2016, and I've always been through the annual events they have, and what I liked, because I had an idea, and then I could see that idea go into fruition, so it's like, wow, I can make a difference. So I'm hoping to do that here, too. I bring grounded, results-oriented mindset, whether it's infrastructure issues, downtown revitalization, or budgeting challenges. I work well with others, and even if we don't see eye to eye, through complex problems with realistic solutions, in a collaborative, problem-solving spirit. We are all different, yet very much the same. There's always common ground to be found. We can build a trusting and workable foundation from that. I believe local government should serve the people openly and honestly. I promote transparent decision-making and welcome accountability for my votes and actions. And I'm not just here to maintain the status quo. I'm looking ahead. As a past president and a current board member of the Greater Honesdale Partnership, I love being part of a leading Honesdale into the future, and especially as the Design Committee, because that's part of the revitalization, so we want to have better sightlines, safer and wealth-lit streets, smoother sidewalks, and better infrastructure, and that'll be a huge boon to our town. I recognize the importance of sustainable development, modern infrastructure, youth engagement, and attracting small businesses, all while preserving Honesdale's unique character. Greater Honesdale Partnership has always been, has been working with Main Street, and we had a facade grant, and about over $400,000 has been poured into Main Street, and it fixed, you know, kind of was a tired-looking town. Now, there's new windows, new signs, new facades, and it really has given a nice uplift to our town. And so it's updated and it's thriving, so that's great. I just, I'm not a big talker. I like to sit back and listen while others talk, and I can take time to understand what they're saying, and I communicate clearly about what's being done and why. I want people to feel valued and heard. That is very important to me. I work across differences, political or personal, to get things done. Local government should be about solutions, not divisions, and I'm committed to bringing people together for the common good. We all have the same goal, a well-run borough government that makes fiscal sense. We can work together or not. My promise to the voters is that I will work with my fellow councilors and the borough staff to bring about sound change that leaves the borough in a better place. Change is hard, but it's certainly needed, and can be done when we all work together with a common goal. And I've been rooted in Honesdale for all of my adult life. I grew up in Boyd's Mills, 10 miles away. While I understand our borough's history and values, I'm not afraid of smart, thoughtful change that benefits everyone in our community. As a Realtor of Davis R. Chant in Honesdale, I'm an ambassador to our town, to our county, and I love to share our history, where we're going, and just show off our beautiful town. And then, so, less than like 10, about 10 years ago or less, we had 14 empty storefronts in Honesdale. Now we have one or two. So we are really making a difference, and now they're filled with thriving shops and restaurants and businesses, and so that's bringing in lots of, you know, activity in Honesdale. Progress takes time, but when we all work together to see the larger picture, we can make giant leaps of progress while maintaining Honesdale's beauty, history, and charm. If I could leave you with three goals that are important to me as a Honesdale Borough Council, it's being forward-thinking, having transparency, and using common sense in decision-making, and of course, with the ability to work well with others. Thank you.
Thank you. The next candidate to speak will be Patrick Rusty.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Pat Rusty. I'm running for Borough Council this November. Little personal history about myself, I've lived in the borough up on North Main Street since 2011. I have four adult children, and my wife Laura and I still reside here with one child living with us. I decided to run for Borough Council for a number of reasons, but one reason is, is that I was very active in the town here in a bunch of projects. I worked for Leeward Construction for 20 years. I put a lot of storm drainage in the ground, I did a lot of roadwork, I mean, I did the Forest Street Bridge, the Park Street Bridge. I was actually responsible for the one-way traffic. Don't hold that against me. Wasn't my idea. But what I think I can bring to the borough is, I have 37 years of construction and heavy highway. I worked in every small town between here, Pittsburgh, Philadelphia, doing streetscape projects, signal projects, I mean, lighting, red lights, green lights, street lighting, bridges, and roadways. I have a very good knowledge of how to get grant money, how to stay inside of a budget on projects, and actually a good knowledge of contracts, law with bidding, and all that process, which I think would be very helpful to the borough. I really do love Honesdale. I've been a Wayne County resident since 1976, when my family moved here to Equinock, where I grew up. My wife also is a full, her whole life Wayne County resident. When I was younger, we used to come to Honesdale, and we called it the big city when we came from Equinock. Still to this day, I visit my sister-in-law Bethany, and I always say to her at the end of the night, "I got to head back to the city." So we can all laugh about that, but Honesdale is a small city with small-city problems that need to be addressed. I've heard about the traffic tonight, I've heard about stormwater management, I've heard about uneven sidewalks. These are all real issues in town. The garbage in town is also a real issue, right? Debris pickup used to be weekly, it's bi-weekly because of budget restraints, which is understandable, and I actually thought it was a good idea to the council that decided that now. My vision, truly, before I go into my vision, I'm very active in our church, I do a ministry at the prison, I'm on the Board of Directors of the Wayne Pike Workforce Alliance, so I really do like to give back. I semi-retired last September, so I have more time to give to the borough, but my vision truly is, is to help create a unified Borough Council. Everyone there has good ideas. They're all good ideas, and like Ms. Kim said, everyone is different, but we all have a common goal. Mr. McAllister said the same thing about budget restraints. People need to understand that things can't get done unless there is money to be had. But I think with new people coming in, hopefully me, existing council members still being there, I think with my knowledge of contracts and construction process, bidding process, grants, I can be a very valuable asset to our borough. I won't keep any more of your time. I appreciate the chance to speak. Thank you to the River Reporter. Thank you to all the people that came out from town tonight to check us all out, and hope to see everybody at the polls in November. Thank you.
The next candidate to speak is Jamie Cordaro.
I'm glad you took time out of your busy schedules to be part of the election process in Honesdale. First of all, I am on the Borough Council. At this time, my goal is to provide a clear and honest representation for the Honesdale borough. I value working in our community and ensure that it benefits all of us, not just a few of us. So I have some, I'm passionate about the community and committed to making it an even better place to live, work, and raise a family, and here are a few things that are on my topic list. I do have handouts over on a table over there, and you can help yourself, take as many as you want. I believe that the economic development and downtown revitalization, the revitalization of Honesdale's downtown is a major ongoing effort. Supporting local businesses is the key to keep the community alive. Creating incentives for new small businesses and providing resources for existing ones, like with the Greater Honesdale Partnership. They've been doing an outstanding job on trying to continue to upgrade the Honesdale business corridor. Infrastructure improvements, advocating for safer crosswalks, improved street lighting, and enhancements to sidewalks to boost walkability. Tourism and marketing, promoting Honesdale's historical character and recreational opportunities like the D and H Rail and Trail, Storebridge Lion, train rides, and that attracts visitors that also end up spending money in our restaurants and our stores. The Storebridge Project, this is a major, this is the importance of a business incubator as a key driver for local entrepreneurship and job creation. Then we get to infrastructure and public works, maintaining and upgrading the borough's infrastructure. I am the chairperson for the stormwater streets and buildings, and it's a fundamental role of local government. It's a lot of that you don't see on a day-to-day operation, but the sewer and water systems are old, they need to be upgraded. The acknowledging, the ongoing sewer replacement projects for advocating for continued investment in aging water and sewer and stormwater system. Traffic and parking, addressing traffic calming flow, the need for more efficient parking solutions, especially in the downtown area. We've brought Pango on, it's an app that's going to be on your phone that'll marry the business with, it's a benefit between the business and the patrons, it'll benefit both. Road maintenance, creating a transparent plan for road repairs and resurfacing to address public concerns about the condition of all our local streets. Stormwater improvements, setting up a full, accurate, intensive, extensive map, which we don't have right now. A lot of our stormwater goes under people's homes and in their backyards and under business like the D&amp;H Rail and Trail, Storebridge Lion train rides, and that attracts visitors that also end up spending money in our restaurants and our stores. The Storebridge Project, this is a major, this is the importance of a business incubator as a key driver for local entrepreneurship and job creation. Then we get to infrastructure and public works, maintaining and upgrading the borough's infrastructure. I am the chairperson for the stormwater streets and buildings, and it's a fundamental role of local government. It's a lot of that you don't see on a day-to-day operation, but the sewer and water systems are old, they need to be upgraded. The acknowledging, the ongoing sewer replacement projects for advocating for continued investment in aging water and sewer and stormwater system. Traffic and parking, addressing traffic calming flow, the need for more efficient parking solutions, especially in the downtown area. We've brought Pango on. It's an app that's gonna be on your phone that'll marry the business with, it's a benefit between the business and the patrons. It'll benefit both. Road maintenance, creating a transparent plan for road repairs and resurfacing to address public concerns about the condition of all our local streets. Stormwater improvements, setting up a full, accurate, intensive, extensive map, which we don't have right now. A lot of our stormwater goes under people's homes and in their backyards and under businesses, and that's the biggest problem down on Fourth Street at this time that we're trying to address. But we're gonna upgrade the stormwater system and get it all out to the river so we no longer have problems in the future. Community services and the quality of life. Honesdale identity is tied to its strong sense of community. Recreational spaces, supporting community green spaces such as Apple Grove, the Pool Recreation Center, which was a huge success this year since we extended the hours. More people were able to participate. We have Veterans Park, Gibbons Park, et cetera. Community events, highlighting the importance of the borough, supporting events like the holiday parades, the Roots and Rhythm Festival, the festivals to build the community and attract visitors to come back into our town. Thank you. Public safety, ensuring that local law enforcement and emergency services have the resources they need to keep the community safe without putting a strain on our resources. And affordability housing, affordable housing, giving the medium household income, we need strategies to address the need for more affordable housing within the borough boundaries. Good governments require sound financial management and open communication with residents. Taxpayer accountability, pledging to manage the borough budget responsibly and find efficiencies to avoid tax increases. The interim manager is keeping expenses under control. We were gonna be over budget last year. He was able to get us where we were not in a deficit. We actually came up with more money. I ask for your vote coming up. I appreciate your time tonight, and I'm willing to talk to anybody after the program. Again, there's handouts over there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the last candidate to speak in this portion of the program is James Hamel.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to The River Reporter for hosting this opportunity for candidates to speak. I think it's really important for the democratic process to host these chances for people to share their vision, their perspectives on their hometown, on the place where they live, and how they would proceed with representing you in local government. So I have had the honor of serving on Borough Council for the last three and a half, almost four years now. I am back on the ballot this year because I feel like there's still a lot to do, because we are so blessed to live here in Honesdale, and we have done so much work over the past, not four years, but prior years, to put in a good foundation for the community that we have, whether it's quality of life, the beautiful park system that we have. We've worked to bring in the stage, the mobile stage that we've brought in there, which has been a huge boon to bringing people into the area and having a great arts community there. I've been the Chair of Parks and Rec, and now we've just undergone a process or begun a process to be an outdoor town, and that will be a process that will also bring in a lot of people from the community to give us some feedback and help us understand how we can go forward and augment a lot of those outdoor parks and amenities that we have, and promote those on a regional level so that we can help bring more people to town, but also provide more amenities like the dog park that we have, the various pool amenities that we have. And one of the great things too, as other council candidates have mentioned, Greater Honesdale Partnership has really pivoted in its mission and been an economic driver for our downtown. Gaining a lot of grant money and revitalization plans, the design committee I've sat on with Kim and Derek and others, has really helped kind of shape a vision for the future to help calm traffic in downtown, to revitalize downtown through the facade grant programs, but also to instill a lot of community pride. That's already there, but we do deserve nice things here in Honesdale. And I think we've proven that with Sycamore Point. I'm on a committee as well with Lackawaxan River Trails, and that's developed these public accesses, the first of their kind on the Lackawaxan River between here and Holly. And now, the Greater Honesdale Partnership with the borough has gone forward to designate 12th Street as a park as well, and seeking more funds to develop a connector right there between Main Street, the Streetscape Project, and Sycamore Point. Early on in my time on Borough Council, I was able to kind of help reestablish the website. The website was a little bit outdated, and we really needed to update that website so that it served the public and provided access to information prior to council meetings and the like. We are not there yet, as some other individuals spoke about tonight. We're still kind of having to work at accessibility issues. We have an aging borough building as well that we saw a lot of monies to help retrofit that so that that can serve the community a lot better as well. And I think one of the things that I take away from tonight is the commitment that each of these candidates has shown tonight, to be a collaborative part of the democratic process on the local level. And I think that we have seen time and time again, and I am one of the major offenders in this, being combative or being argumentative or critical. And I think that it's really important to understand that criticism does not mean that you dislike somebody or even hate somebody. Hate has been a very pervasive thing in our federal country discussion at this point. And I think that there is no space for that in our community, and I think that we should all find ways to show from a leadership standpoint that we are neighbors and that we care about one another and that we are, at times, human. But it's really important that we don't lose sight of that, as we are representatives of individuals who live here, who grew up here. I grew up here and have moved back with my family, and I'm raising them now here in this community. So I am on the ballot for Council. I've served there and would appreciate your support for another four-year term. I am on the ballot for Mayor as well, and I'll certainly get into discussion there too. But when it comes to local government, I do think that it's important for people to have options. People running unopposed, we've seen that quite often, and I'd like to see that, you know, more people show up and give of their time and talents. So thank you very much.
We'll now break for a 10- to 15-minute intermission before we launch into the mayoral debate, the mayoral discussion. I'm sorry I keep making that particular faux pas, but the, I wanted to extend a couple of thanks to some of the people who've helped make this event possible. Thank you to Connor Simon for stepping up to help with the audio and video portion of this event. Thank you to Leona Ballister for helping with the timekeeping and organizing for the And thank you to River Reporter publisher Lori Stewart and staff reporter Carla Guzman back behind you. Talk amongst yourselves. You got 10 to 15 minutes. Thank you. We're going to get started with the second half of our program, featuring our candidates for Honesdale Borough Mayor, Jim Hamel and Derek Williams. A couple of things before we begin. I forgot to mention at the conclusion of the previous part of the program that we have an eighth candidate for Council, Jason Newbon, who could not be reached to participate in this evening's event. So that's why he was not here. But yeah, we're going to start with opening statements from each of the candidates, and then we will go into a series of questions. That was curated from questions submitted to The River Reporter, curated and lightly edited by River Reporter staff, myself, so, yeah. And we'll start the opening statements with Derek Williams.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. This is a really excellent opportunity to share in local democracy, and I was talking to one of my favorite local historians at Borough Hall, recently Secretary Pol Tannis. She didn't remember that there ever having been a debate for Mayor before, so cheers on all of us for being able to participate in that tonight. Also like to say a quick hi to my folks. They're not here tonight, but my mom and pops are off, headed to a David Byrne concert, and I think they're gonna have just as much fun, at very least, as we are. So the job James and I are seeking is a lot, to be Mayor. It can take all you've got. For me, it means a lot of listening. It means having accepted into my family an extra 4,500 people. It means making way more time for others than for yourself. It means going to bed at night and waking up in the morning thinking about town, and it means having a full-time job that pays per hour less than it costs to park per hour here in town. It's also kind of the best, you know? You get to learn something every day. You, for me, you get to appreciate town more and more with each story you're able to hear from local citizens, and I get to feel more and more like here is home with every hour doing this job, and I really appreciate that. And some of the things I've been reflecting on leading up to this over the past four years of mayor-ing or so, that have been kind of like highlights for me, some of them have included taking all the salary I get and spending it at places in town, and having most of that money go toward helping people who don't have a house find an emergency place to stay at night. It's included helping neighbors understand our ordinances and sometimes helping them challenge our ordinances. It's included supporting borough staff who do a wonderful job. It's included working with the police department. It's included closing down some streets to let people run around and watch a movie and have some outdoor movies. It's including participating in placemaking projects that have centered the citizen voice in the design of public space. And it's included a lot of like really awesome streetscape work that has been going on for decades of planning and grant funding and grant writing, and we got millions in the bank, and we're really close to being able to deliver on some design changes that will make transformational changes in town for how safe it can be and should be in town. So as we discuss these issues tonight, just keep in mind they're all really complex, and it's because systems are involved, and neither of us can fix anything alone. We all need to work together. Individual blame can sometimes be led, and it leads to distraction and division, and we have plenty of that. So when we collaborate and work together and remove our silos, we can really accomplish a lot. That's something I have done before I was Mayor. It's something I'll do after I've Mayor. Something I was very proud to be able to do for the last four years, and it's something I'd like to be able to do for the next four years. Thank you.
I echo Derek's sentiments about feeling really honored to be a part of local government. I have served on Honesdale Borough Council, and I think that what Derek speaks about, kind of being there for your community 24/7, it's the case for Borough Council members. I know folks in this crowd who are on Council or have served on Council know that to be true as well. We're your voice on the local level where things matter. They really do. As I spoke about earlier, I'm a firm believer in not necessarily having people run unopposed for positions in government, and I think Derek has done a very admirable job as Mayor. I think that there are differences of opinion, and that's actually healthy for democracy. I think that at times we have lost sight of that ability to discern the differences and realize that those differences make us stronger. And at times, I hope that in a leadership role, what we can do is provide for people the tools they need to make decisions, whether it just be objective information, factual information, and I think I've done that throughout my time on Borough Council for the last four years. I would continue to do that as well. Speaking to my record, I have been the only member of Council to vote against a tax increase the past two times around. We've worked to secure funding from a state level to improve our parks, and I've led those efforts within the Parks and Rec Department, the dog park. We've, as I mentioned, purchased the stage where the whole community comes together a couple times a week in the summer. It really celebrates the arts. I've been a volunteer. That's another part of my passionate background as well, in the community, volunteering with the Rotary Club. We've done a lot of pickups, plantings, cleanups, certainly involved at the Coop Ridge as a volunteer there as well, and just really kind of try to be involved everywhere throughout the community so that I can have a better understanding of the perspectives of our neighbors. I'm a no-gimmick kind of guy. I'm all about transparency and accountability. So I hope you'll choose me, but of course, if you don't, we still have a pretty darn good Mayor in Derek. Thank you.
The first question of the evening, and this question will go first to Mr. Hamel. What is a Mayor even? Like, what are the roles and responsibilities of a Borough Mayor?
We certainly had this discussion via email, Liam. We agreed, both Derek and I, to do this debate, and one of the key issues that I believe in regarding the Mayor's role, there is a Borough Code, and that dictates what the different responsibilities are for Council and for the Mayor. And currently, the Borough Code states that the Mayor's role and responsibility is to be the Chief of Public Safety. Mayors in the past, including my wife, Ms. Fish's daughter, Mr. Bishop, Mr. Fritz, they've all been mainly ceremonial in their roles, tie-breaking votes, as Mr. Williams has done, and they have overseen the police department. That is the statutory obligation of a Mayor. It is to help lead from a position of the community and what the community wants, but also to hold those accountable in the police department for budgetary considerations, for the way in which they perform their duties. And I think that that's really the main role of what the Mayor is, aside from the PR aspect, the community voice and vocal leader that the Mayor can be on various issues, but also just on pride. And I think that, you know, we do instill a lot of, we place a lot of value in our Mayor in the borough system here in Pennsylvania, but really, the job gets done at the Council level. There's seven members of Council. There's a majority that rules there, and the Mayor then has to enact ordinances or otherwise, and kind of be a spokesperson for the broader public, because it is the only position in the borough that is a singular, solely-elected position in the borough. So it does have that gravitas, but also it does not have the legislative power or the administrative power.
Thank you.
That's a nice tone, too. I like that.
So for me, I would agree. You know, when we get into elected office, we read all the manuals and kind of learn what it is that the job entails, and some of those things Mr. Hamel just totally described. You know, you have that charge and control, the Chief of Police and the police force. You have kind of some loose ones, though, and those are where I find a lot of the nuts and bolts of the job being. You know, those loose ones include preserving the public peace, for instance. You know, how do you do that, right? You gotta do a lot of listening. You gotta know a lot of what's going on. You're also responsible from time to time for declaring an emergency. That's happened. Those are a little bit easier to figure out because the water comes down the hill and blows out a pipe, and then you got an emergency, so we know what to do. You gotta break the ties. You can veto the executive function. You sign things into law once it gets past the Council realm. And then there is the bit about, you know, enforcing ordinances and regulations, and the only way that I've found to be able to really do that well is to know what those ordinances and regulations are and be involved in the process of crafting those. So we have a lot of land use responsibility. We have zoning. We have, the whole works, really. So working through those processes has been really helpful for me, and that comes from a lot of my background and just interest in doing the job. So statutory responsibilities can sometimes be in a gray area, and while, you know, if I'm out there listening and someone needs to have a place to stay at night, or someone has a question about how something works, or someone has an issue that they don't really, they have nowhere else to turn, or someone needs someone to go to their house to talk to them and see what's going on, I'm not in the position or comfortable telling them that any of that type of stuff is outside of my jurisdiction because one of the line items in the statute of Pennsylvania is that I need to be focused on the police department. You have to do a lot of things. You're constantly juggling, and that's how I handle the role. You're constantly juggling and that's how I handle the role.
Uh, it is, uh, you are sorely underpaid, you know, in, in public service in the, in the borough. But I do think that what we've been lacking just in, in general, um, from a borough perspective is a plan. Um, and more clearly defined ways in which to achieve goals. Um, and so when I look at, um, the goals that we have to improve pedestrian safety, for instance, we have the opportunity to both recreate the design of Main Street to help, um, improve safety, traffic calming, but we also have the ability to direct public employees to act in an enforcement nature, to be suppressants or to be just eyes and ears in the public. And I, I think that we can do more in that realm, um, but, but I think that that's one of the key components of the mayor's role is to see where there are needs and, and apply the resources that we are paying for from a budgetary perspective to those needs.
Great. Uh, let's talk a little bit about streets and this might come up later and the police might come up later too, because those are all big topics. Uh, the progress we've been making that's been really, really helpful is trying to unpack like the street safety of Main Street, which is super longstanding. Uh, Pat mentioned about the one-way street. You know, we did some work in town to make it easier to get cars through town many years ago. And at the time, the work didn't include the follow-up work to make it safer for the people already living here. We solved for one thing and we left another thing, um, for later. And that's what we're dealing with, uh, dealing with now. And I find it really helpful and hopeful that we've had the opportunity to collaborate with the likes of the GHP and many others to be working on those type of issues because when it comes down to it, uh, if we have a few officers and I'm telling them through some sort of directive that they need to sit over here to stop an issue that's part of a systems design, their time is not going to be very well spent and they could be doing other things.
Thank you. Um, this next question does kind of address the police department, which has already come up a little bit tonight. What is the current state of Honesdale's Police Department? Are there issues that it currently has or needs that it currently has and how would you plan to address those? And this question goes first to, uh, Mr. Williams.
Great. So, uh, as we discussed, you have kind of a dual role when you have, uh, elected officials here. You have the mayor with some day-to-day work with the police department and setting policy. You have council, which hires and fires and sets the budget. So when we're talking about setting up a plan, we need to have everybody kind of working together and coming up with that type of plan. Uh, currently we're in a situation where we have, let's see, I believe, uh, maybe four full-time officers. I wrote that down somewhere. Um, three part-time, wait, three full-time officers, a chief and four part-time officers. Historically, this has been like a challenge for us and it's always been to, uh, make sure we have enough money for the police. If you go back to the nineties and the two thousands, we had grants that were covering the salaries of the police. Those grants went away almost immediately. Council at the time was talking about how do we fund something like this? You have the overhead of part-timers who have other jobs. It's difficult for them to stick around and kind of piecing it all together makes it difficult for us to have the coverage that people want. Yet what we don't always talk about is what the trade-off is for that coverage. If we want overnight coverage, we have to maybe hire six more police officers. If we want to hire six more police officers, maybe we need to raise our taxes. I don't know. Those are things that I'm happy to talk to the public about and get a lot of more feedback on and, um, I wish it was an easy solution, but the officers we do have are doing their darndest on, um, traffic control and responding to things on an everyday basis and, um, doing quite a bit with very little. Um, at the same time, I think it'd be just helpful to point out a little bit of the more recent arc of history and, uh, there's a meeting minute in December of 2021, right before I got on board, we had a part-time officer resign and at the time council was talking about, shoot, what are we going to do? That's the last of our part-timers. We only have like three full-timers left. So thankfully we've been able to hire significantly more since then, so we are in a net positive position.
So, uh, we certainly have had, uh, a long history of not having the police department thrive. Um, and I think that as we point to the need to have more officers to cover more shifts or to, uh, we've certainly been without overnight shifts now for at least eight years. Um, so it's not, it's something the mayor here has inherited. Uh, but we look at communities next to us in Holly or Waymart or Forest City and of course larger communities like Carbondale and, and they're able to hire a good number of officers. Honesdale's not. And I've said this time and time again, within these Borough Council meetings, we need to look inward as to why we can't get candidates to hire for Honesdale Borough Police. Is it the pay? I think that's a rhetorical question. I think we would be willing to pay and if we had the applicants, every time we put up a, a civil service, um, uh, you know, opportunity, we get one or two applicants at most. Um, and so, you know, doing things as we are right now is not working. Um, I would propose changing the culture in our police department. That has been a longstanding issue, um, where positive reinforcement and community forward-facing, um, interactions, um, I, you know, you go to, whether it's Holly or any of these other communities, people know their police chief and they are, um, working in tandem with that individual and the rest of the police force. Here, um, it's not the case and I think that's, that's a leadership issue up and down, but I think that we can fix that by changing that culture, incentivizing people to, um, be a part of the community and, um, you know, redetermining what the role is of our police department in a community that is not crime-ridden, but we have seen just even last night at the council meeting in August, we had like almost two hundred citations. So it can be done.
Thank you. Yeah. In August, we had a lot of traffic citations because we were propped up to pay overtime with some grants, which was really helpful. Um, when we talk about the culture of the police department, something else that's worth keeping in mind is morale within the department. And sometimes morale is low when, um, existing elected officials are, you know, kind of casting doubt on the police department on Facebook or out and about in public. They find it more difficult to do their job under those conditions when they're already in difficult conditions and we can hire people all day long. Uh, however, I don't know where we're going to get the money from. We don't have the budget to do maybe some of the things we want to do. And I think sometimes we know that and if we aren't being real with ourselves about those finances, we are maybe offering a chance to, uh, to miss out on, uh, some key data.
You speak about the overtime. Um, one thing that I think, uh, you know, taxpayers should be aware of is just in 2024 alone, we paid more than double in police overtime for our full-time and part-time staff. Um, that's well over budget. Um, now, would that have been easier to pay somebody, uh, an additional person and have more hours covered? Uh, you know, you can't go back and change what's, what's happened, but looking forward, I still have yet to see whether it's at the council level with our public safety department. And we've talked about this when I was council president, when, uh, Mayor Derek and I and everybody else were trying to theorize how we can best address the lack of shift coverage, um, and the need to bring in more officers and more applicants. And we are still no further along. In fact, we just accepted another resignation last night and last, last month. This is in a, in a downhill trajectory and the concern I would have is what if one or two of those police officers full-time are out, then we have zero police coverage.
Thank you. Um, the next question, um, is, we'll go first to Mr. Hamill. And the question is, how can we protect our residents and visitors from the threat of immigrations and customs enforcement raids? Specifically, how would you direct the Honesdale Borough Police to interact with federal immigration's enforcement officers?
So I think this kind of dovetails with some of this discussion we've been having that our, um, as is, our police department is woefully understaffed. Um, and that can only lead to capacity issues, which, um, we have not addressed up as of yet, but should be in the future, whether it's providing individuals who can take on a lot of secretarial work, uh, paperwork within the, uh, police department to allow for those officers to create relationships within not just the Wayne County, um, law enforcement community, but from a broader standpoint. When we have law enforcement agents come in here from a federal standpoint, we're none the wiser because we don't have those relationships. We have not worked to build those relationships. And that does not negate the fact that, um, there is considerable concern on a local level as to the justifications for those federal raids, but at the same time, um, we don't have jurisdiction in that on a local level. And that's just the basic breakdown of our civic government, um, to understand a little bit more about what we can deal with on a public safety level here. We are dealing with ordinances and crimes that are on, um, a statute level, like that are within the Pennsylvania crime code or otherwise on our books, but from a federal standpoint, we don't deal with immigration. So there would be very few opportunities for our local police department to interface with ICE or others unless we actually made an effort to develop those relationships on that level. And up until now, I'm not aware of any efforts to do so.
Uh, in my experience so far, uh, there's been no effort made on the federal government's level to work with, with us. Every time they've visited town, they've done so without notice. They stop by the police department afterward. They say like, hey, we're already here. Can you help us with this? Police have no idea what's going on. Uh, they don't need our support. They do whatever they want. That's a, kind of the reality of that situation and it's difficult when that reality hits home and your neighbors are taken from their homes. And these are different, these, these officers are a lot different than our officers. They, um, they wear masks. It's tough to get identification out of them. They don't have warrants. They can have different warrants. They can scare you, uh, they can block the sidewalk, they can mess with traffic. It's a whole suite of things that they do and they come in hot and heavy and it traumatizes everybody. Um, our officers don't do that. Our officers care about the community because they're here to serve the community. And if we're speaking about our officers again, um, like overtime, you know, they have to do a lot of work and they're pushed with the limited resources they have. So sometimes they have to do overtime and sometimes they're doing overtime to do the things that certain council members are like asking them to do. And while the police department may be over on the single line item of overtime, they've been under for three years in a row to the total of a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars of their total budget, where the rest of that money comes from to pay for overtime. Other segments of our budget are deficient and they're, they receive interfund transfers all the time to kind of make up for it. The police department's not that. Um, and as a final reminder, with the officer slate that we have, as understaffed as they are and as on the precipice as Mr. Hamill presents us with potentially losing some and what that would mean to our community, we have significantly more resources than we do now. Uh, since I've been here, since we're talking about us, we've hired eight part-time officers. One of them, we were unable to hire. That leaves us with seven. Two part-time officers resigned. Happens all the time. One part-time officer upgraded to full-time officer and Mr. Hamill voted no on that. So we have a net positive, uh, by a lot. Thank you.
Yeah. The police department has, for a long time, uh, prior to us even being in the borough government, um, been pretty robust and self-sufficient, um, from a funding standpoint. Um, the fact that we have hired and budgeted for additional police officers that have not come to fruition, that has helped pad our budgetary constraints. But really I think what we're, what we're lacking when it comes to the management of the police department, um, I know that this really initial question, you know, spoke about the interaction with federal, uh, agents and all, um, but is, is a little bit of accountability for the, the day-to-day operations. And I don't think that there's enough transparency right now into what's happening on, um, an administrative level there. We get data every council meeting, but we don't get context. Thank you.
Uh, yeah. So on a day-to-day basis, our officers are responding to your domestic disturbances. Uh, they're helping out with, um, people who are dealing with mental health crises. They're dealing with traffic stops. They are dealing with things that are super stressful to them. And, uh, it is one heck of a job and it is something that is not, uh, not easy for any of us to, to figure out how to make better, you know? We, we know what we want. Sometimes we ask for overnight coverage even when we don't have the resources. That strains things. Speaks to morale too. I've seen people speak on the news like, hey, we're going for overnight coverage. No coordination with the rest of council and it's just a, just creates like a little bit of a cluster. So, um, the police is a tough nut, but when it comes back to the federal government, they haven't, um, played nice with us and I will leave it at that.
Thank you. Um, this next question gets a bit into the weeds of politics. If I'm remembering the situation correctly, uh, the, each of you got enough votes in the primaries to run for both council and mayor, and correct me if that mistaken. Um, however, you made different choices on how you're going to approach the general with, uh, Mr. Hamill choosing to run both for council and mayor and Mr. Williams' vote choosing to run just for mayor. Um, so could each of you say sort of why you made the choice that you did?
Yeah, I, um, I like being mayor. I find it's like a really, a really good job and to me I get the, uh, the same kicks out of it as I would with any other elected official job. I don't need the day-to-day vote. Um, I don't need the even the tie-break vote. I just want to be there to discuss the things that are going on and make sure that the citizens have a voice in what's happening in the borough. It could be, um, to my detriment for not putting myself on the ballot for every possible thing. I don't know, but I know that I'm comfortable being mayor and I'm comfortable presenting myself as such. And, uh, that's kind of where I'm coming from with it. The other parts of that could be the, um, you know, I've always been registered unaffiliated. I have nothing against any party. I just am not a member thereof. So the primary is always different. It means you can't participate. In the state of Pennsylvania, it's a closed primary system. So a lot of voices don't have a chance to, to speak to what's going on. And I like to carry that forward with me. So I appreciate the write-in votes that I'm able to potentially, um, get some ballot access and one of the, the main parties is very warming to my heart to have that extra support and see that support in the primary, even though I couldn't be listed on the primary, yet I'm very happily, um, finding myself on the ballot as an independent just for mayor.
Uh, myself, I'm very much, uh, in favor of open primaries and the state of Pennsylvania is slow, if not draconian in not having that, um, currently. So I echo the mayor's statement. If, if I felt as though, um, you know, the, the party politic was, was not as big a player as it is, uh, it, it certainly is. And, uh, for one thing, um, I had been a registered Republican here in Wayne County because you sometimes get a say in the primary in the Republican primary around here. Um, I did change to independent as well because of my background as a journalist. I feel like being an independent is, um, as objective and middle of the road as you can get. Um, but then in this, uh, election in particular, I chose to register as a Democrat. Um, one, because I did want to vote for an individual who ran for magistrate district judge and, and, and secured both nominations there. So I could, I could not sit back on the sidelines, um, and not play a role in that primary, um, as a voter. But then as an elected representative, I look around this room, there's nobody here, even though I know what your party affiliation is, none of that matters at all on a local level. And to suggest otherwise, I think that we're kidding ourselves. It's not D, it's not R. It's really not. Um, we're all kind of like in need of getting rid of that type of mentality because there's no need for it. Um, I understand that they exist, the parties do, and I appreciate, um, the fact that they do a lot of good on a local level, but from a governmental standpoint, there's, there's no Democratic policies, there's no Republican policies, there's really no independent policies either. So I, I mean, I don't know if that answers the question, but it certainly, uh, tells you what, what I'm thinking about and how I feel about local government and the fact that we have a really flawed system in the state of Pennsylvania.
Yeah. So I would just close by saying, you know, I'm a pretty humble guy, so to speak. Um, I want people to see me on the ballot. speak. I want people to see me on the ballot for the thing that I really want to do. And I have very little interest in collecting power or authority. And I'm not sure that leadership really has anything to do with title, so to speak. So the posture of being just one thing versus having the opportunity to do two is was very clear to me and what decision to make. And just while we're talking about the primary being open and closed, just keep an eye out. Every so often, because the primary is closed, you'll have cycles of the legislature that will push through some constitutional amendments, and those will land in the primary. And everybody can vote on those in the primary when they do land in the primary. But because they're in the primary and folks aren't used to voting in the primary, if you're not a D or an R, that's an undervoted type election, and it leaves things to like happen without without notice.
So from a power perspective, I think we've gone over this, the mayor has no power but to oversee the police department. So an individual council member has no power. We have learned that time and time again in our very interesting discussions and disagreements at the council level. But I think that serving as a voice of reason, as I've tried at times, and being the lone Novo, being outnumbered, that's still something that I'd like to represent if not elected to be mayor. That's a legislative perspective. But from the mayor's perspective, again, I think that the electorate deserves to have a choice. And also, if running for mayor or just having my name on the ballot and having the contest come down in November, and it lets Mr. Williams or others know, hey, there's people who also are interested in the role, that can be the set of accountability as well.
Thank you. The next question involves the borough streets. How can the borough make it safer for people walking in town? And this question goes first to Mr. Hamill.
Lots of ways, Liam. We could be here a long time, but we don't have the time. We are on our way from a design standpoint. We had two-way streets, church and main, and then they added a bridge, and they did nothing else but turn them one way. Zero. Turned them into highways, freeways. And then we had the diminishment of the police department over time, which which led to, you know, the the fewer times that police are seen in town, the more drivers feel like, well, I'm not going to get pulled over. So they'll just cruise right down the street. And we have a line-of-sight issue as well right now that Greater Honesdale Partnership Design Committee and members of Borough Council have been very keenly aware of, and twice over, taken votes to remove parking spaces from Main Street. Yet those parking spaces have still not been removed. And it is a disservice to the safety of our citizens. So we can walk and chew gum at the same time. We can hold those accountable who are supposed to be doing, whether it's the engineering work, whether that's a hired third party, whether that's a committee, whether that's an interim borough manager, whether that's a DBW director, whether that's a mayor, or a set of council members, to do the things that we've set forth to do, which is remove parking spaces so that you can see people across walks. And then the design layer can come on top of that over time. We've gotten a lot of funding indications because we are designated downtown in the Main Street Matters funding stream right now and other funding streams. We can improve traffic calming in town, but then we can also utilize our public resources in the police department to be seen and to make people feel as though I can't get away with driving too fast in town and recklessly.
Great. I was glad to be included in the group of people who could have a say in this problem or solving this problem because it's a systems problem and there's a lot of moving parts to it. I was hesitant to to say I could do anything from the start, being reminded that I'm supposed to only be focused on the police department. But then I reminded myself that the statutory authority does include those other things like peace and order and enforcement of ordinances and the whole suite of other things that the mayor's supposed to be doing. So when it comes to the police addressing the issue of street safety, it's a matter of resources. We have speeds that go too fast because of the one-way scenario. It's designed like a highway, two lanes, absolutely no instructions, obstructions, rather. If you wanted to slow traffic down with the police, you'd have to have them sitting there all day. We also have a secondary issue. When the traffic's going one way, you can't see upstream as well. Or when you're coming downstream, you have cars blocking you. It's a whole nightmare. If you wanted to save people's lives, like who have died, or if you want to have people be less hurt who have been hurt from hit by cars, you'd have to have a police officer at every single intersection, looking and making eye contact with every single driver, making sure they're looking downstream to see if any pedestrians are coming, in addition to upstream to see where the cars are coming that they're doing to keep themselves safe. We've had more or less police over the years, and we've had more or less police within the timeframe that we've switched to one-way traffic. And the amount of police and the amount of enforcement has not made a difference. It makes a difference when we can be there and have some traffic enforcement and let people know. As soon as the police are gone, people are speeding again. If nobody's telling people to look in another way, they're just looking for cars coming and they're driving down the one-way street. It's 100% a design issue. It's very complicated because of that. And it's, you know, it's difficult to wrap your head around that the system is broken, and it's difficult to wrap your head around how you can fix that. It's easy to say like, oh, I'll just toss some more police at it when they're out doing a million other things and there's only a couple of them. It's easy to say that it's personal responsibility of being safer crossing the street or watching where you're driving. But the underlying behavior is driven by the systems design, and that's what we're looking to change.
So last year, May, I think it warmed up pretty quickly, and we had a spate of pedestrian crashes. Thankfully, none were fatal, I believe. But there were enough that it was deeply concerning to just about everybody in town, whether it was social media or within the borough government. And there was no action taking place. I reached out to State Senator Rosemary Brown. I reached out to PennDOT. We brought PennDOT to the table. We brought the senator's office to the table. We did a walk around town. And we held a news conference at the Fred R. Miller Pavilion with GHP, talking about the design changes that are coming, and created an awareness campaign in a very short period of time. Now, there's no telling whether or not that stemmed those issues from happening. But very shortly after, we had some speedminders placed in town on Main Street and Church Street to let people know how fast they're going. And I think that slowed traffic down, and there was action taken, and it needed to be taken.
So we talk about being concerned since last May. I've been concerned about traffic safety, and a lot of people have for 15 years. What hasn't changed is the mindset that has recently changed, which has put us in a position where we have millions of dollars in the bank to address the street shape concerns and redesign Main Street, put things like bump outs in, and make more flashing beacons. And it's great that we have the speedminders. Those are really helpful. That's a design thing that can sit there rooted and remind people what they're what they're doing. The progress we have been made has been slow coming. And I can understand that if you don't have the perspective of being in the process of working through these things for so long that you might forget that. But we have been decades in the making of doing comprehensive plan after comprehensive plan that identified that the one-way traffic was a problem as soon as it became one-way. And we're finally in a position to implement some design changes that'll really make a difference.
Thank you. The next question addresses another of the borough's persistent infrastructure concerns, stormwater. How can the borough work to address the sort of stormwater design and damage issues that it currently has? This question goes first to Mr. Williams.
This is another one that goes back for like ever. You know, if you think of town, we're in a valley. Water goes downhill. It hasn't been different since we've had like giant glaciers in town during the Ice Age or whatever, you know? So as we've developed over time, you start looking into the canal era, we have choices that we've made, for better or for worse. These are the choices we made at the time, and the people making them were doing the best they could. We have creeks above ground. They were taken below ground into pipes. That's not something we really do anymore. And those pipes are always going to break. We can do our best to fix them. We got to reinforce them. But that's always going to be a problem. We also have a bunch of pipes underground that carry water just when it rains. And those things need fixing, too. All of that stuff comes downhill and converges, like Mr. Cordaro was saying, right on Fourth Street and goes under the top-notch parking lot. All that water that normally would have just flown into the creek years and years and years ago, and a few less years ago, it would have flown into the canal. So what we can do is we have to get back to the drawing board and do some comprehensive planning about that. We need to look at things like maybe daylighting some streams. We need to look, of course, at fixing what's already broken. We need to look at maybe having some wetland gardens and ways to just slow the water down. Somebody suggested one time we should bring the canal back. And I think that might be kind of a fun idea because then the water would have a place to go. But holding basins and comprehensive planning and daylighting, all that stuff will be identified. So we have to fix what's broken now, obviously. And then the planning in the future will be able to help us itemize these other alternatives.
Yeah, same. I mean, it's been 50, 60 years since our stormwater infrastructure's been updated. And we are not seeing the same amounts of rainfall. We're seeing increased amounts of rainfall at this point. And so we need to go back to the drawing board, as the mayor said. All of that is very accurate. I'll take a I'll take a little pivot on this one. I've been at, you know, the council level now for almost four years and been involved with a lot of these discussions with state legislators and the Conservation District and other entities to work together to address these issues. It is much larger than just Honesdale Borough being able to address this, not only just from a financial standpoint, but from a capacity standpoint. But what we have had, and this is hard not to come across as any blame, but a very inconsistent and dysfunctional body politic in our community. We are dealing with a debt of inaction, as Jim Jennings, a former councilman, said. And we have not been able to get our proverbial together to have the correct administrative personnel and planning opportunities. We are probably there with Vine Street as of right now, as we're doing an emergency Band-Aid, if you will. But the concern is much larger from a future-proof standpoint. We need to plan for 50 and 100 years in the future, not just five and 10. And we need to get our proverbial together, to work together, to make those plans. And it's very difficult when we have the dysfunction that we've had at the council level, not just at meetings, but within committees. It's it's really been a disservice to the community over the past several years.
I'd rather not engage with the language of dysfunction and and council not working right together. It is just a big issue. It's a systems issue. And I've seen more progress in it myself in very recent memory. We have an interim borough manager who came on board. That's a position we haven't had for a long time. It's really helpful in coordinating resources. And through that coordination, we've been able to reallocate some grant funding to Vine Street. We've been talking with state and federal representatives. We're looking at $2 million to fix Vine Street in kind of an interim phase. Beyond that, it could be 10s and 20s to kind of fix the whole problem comprehensively. Yet having the manager here is certainly not added to our dysfunction. It's helped us function significantly better.
I'll just leave it at this. We we do have a topographical, geographical consideration here. And where we can work with our federal legislators, our state legislators, to line up, whether it's financing, as Mr. McAlster's begun to kind of take a look at various options along with our interim borough manager, to really gain access to the millions upon millions of dollars that's needed to do this. What we need to do when this comes to fruition is be extremely smart about it and not just do the same type of work as as the mayor's pointed out. We need to look at ways in which we can not just enhance infrastructure, but then marry it to potential improvements to our streetscapes and our parks and, you know, really leave a legacy of of stewardship and improvement for what the community has underground and above ground. Thanks for the question.
Thank you. This will be the last question before closing statements. And it's just a fun question, so it doesn't need to be be the full discussion. If you were to write a book about Honesdale, what would it be about and what would the title be? And either of you can take that first.
Want to go first?
Give me a little bit more context, just now?
Any book.
Any book whatsoever.
Any any genre, either. It could be fiction, nonfiction.
I've I've read some, you know, books that do exist on Honesdale, talking about the canal days and how whiskey was a very prevalent thing in this town. And I don't think that's necessarily changed. I mean, our council president does have an Irish pub. And so I think the book would be about the, for lack of a better perspective, a Norman Rockwellian, like beautiful bucolic hamlet here tucked in the mountains along the riverbanks, where, you know, the natural beauty that surrounds town is only complemented by by the goodness in the people who exist here. And at times, it can get interesting. It can have twists and turns. And all of that, like messiness at times in the book of Honesdale, makes us more resilient. It makes us, it makes us learn from our mistakes. And it also, I think, helps us have a little bit better understanding of where each other come from. That might not be quite as specific as I would actually pen the book. But the the way in which Honesdale exists now, it's the envy of a lot of places. I travel pretty far across the state and out of state for my full-time job. And when I tell people I'm from Honesdale, they're like, Honesdale? Wow, they've really got it going on. And I'm like, yeah, man, I grew up there. I grew up on Ridge Street. Shout out to Joe and everybody else up there on Ridge. But the but coming home here, and and there have been articles that have talked about the reverse brain drain in town, and that that pride that people have in this community. I see it in everybody who's here, but also in the two of us up here. I don't think you have to, well, we're among the biggest champions of Honesdale. And it might be a big seller. It might be, you know, just a really heartwarming book. But but the book would would incorporate, as as I'll quickly mention this one. Back in high school, we had the spirit games and spirit week, and we did all this stuff about the torch and the story. And Honesdale kids know what I'm talking about. Chris Murray and I wrote the story, but we incorporated every single person from our class in that story. And I feel like every single person has a role to play in our community.
That's great. This is a super fun question. It allows me to kind of like, both of us probably, just put away our notes for a little bit and ponder it. I like thinking of Honesdale as a bit of an island, just from like a geographical perspective. If you look back into the history, you had the river going around us, like kind of three sides. And the other side, we would have had a canal. So we're like a literal island in that sense, with a lot of bridges and everything. Yet culturally, we got all sorts of stuff going on, services, government, people in and out all the time. We're surrounded by like a sea of green. Maybe like island life? That could be the title. I don't know. I'll still be mulling that over. But what it would definitely be about would be the people and the stories. And I've had the absolute privilege probably of my life thus far, like talking to people and listening to what they care about in the community over the last four years. And whenever I have time, I jot down all those stories in notebooks. And I'll tell you, I have stacks of the dang things with stories. And they're stories of just, you know, the last four years. But they're also stories of future hopes. They're also stories of what is interesting to people and how things connect to the distant past. And for the amount of time I've been able to dedicate to jotting down what's in my head, there's another whole stack that I have had no time for. So I'll definitely write that book someday. We'd have to figure out probably like some more affordable housing in town and get the transportation safety figured out. Because if we have like a real good book like that and it drew more people into town, we need a place for them to live and so they could be our 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 neighbors. But yeah, that's a that's a really fun question. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, thank you again, the both of you, so much for participating in this discussion. We'll now have three-minute closing statements from each of you, starting with you, Mr. Williams, going to Mr. Hamill.
Well, just thanks to everybody again for coming here tonight. This is so cool. Thanks kind of in the more particular to the River Reporter for putting this all on and hosting it. And thanks to the county for hosting it and the the elementary school where James where James and I got in trouble and ran around in the big toy on many years ago. There is a, you know, we both obviously care about town, and our hearts are in it. Same with everybody on council, same with everybody who ever wants to do this job that doesn't give you enough money to pay for parking. It's just the nature of the, of the gig. Maybe we have some differences in kind of the responsibility of the role and the opportunity we have to be able to work together. That's fine. However, I will say that, you know, beyond us, and beyond anyone who spoke here tonight, we collectively, and beyond this room, everyone else around here, we can solve our problems, and that's what it takes. Like, we have to all be able to work on these things together. The collaborative nature is really the only way that we can turn the corner or make positive progress happen. And being able to be a part of that we has been really, really, really wild, and really, really enlightening, and something I truly, truly appreciated. Kind of as a circle back to something I mentioned earlier, it's been in my head since I read it in a book earlier this year, but leadership really is not just those of us who are elected. It's exhibited day in and day out by everyday people who are trying to understand the systems around them, and trying to help their neighbors navigate those systems, and trying to make positive change for people that they know, and people that they don't know, and everybody around them. And that potential is inherent in every single one of you, and everyone else out there. And if you never want to do this job, that's fine, but you can still make just as much impact as any of us by being involved. And we couldn't do our job without you either. So bear that in mind during election season. Gets a little heavy, it gets a little awkward sometimes. Voting is only one of a million super, super important things to do to have your community be strong and to be a part of prosperity for as many people as possible. Lastly, I would just say like, hey, if I don't get elected, then I'm going to do some more writing on that book. And can maybe make a little more progress on that. We have, thankfully, we have these awesome stores in town, bookshop, the coffee shop. Main Street's thriving. It's a beautiful place. All sorts of things going on. We see people coming into town all the time. They're like, whoa, look at this. And you can tell, like, almost in like New York, you can, they're not looking up because our buildings aren't that high, but you can tell who's visiting and who's really enjoying it these days, and it's a beautiful thing. And we have that beauty because people are working together in a collaborative way.
You're here. It is very true that we are all a part of our community. Everybody has a voice. And as elected representatives, seven members of council and one mayor, that is the extent of your municipal government in Honesdale Borough. I am quite proud, not just of our community and how, I mean, forward-thinking it really is, and change is happening right now. And, and it's been somewhat of an organic change. But then there's also these organizations that have pivoted from their, from their roles, previous roles, to what they've been doing now, which is seeking, you know, funding and redesigns and commitment to the business community. And I don't think that that happened without strong leadership. And I don't mean strong leadership from the standpoint of somebody coming in and dictating to everybody how to do things, but to lead as an example, to hear the perspectives of everyone, and then provide this opportunity to have the differences, but to arrive at a shared goal. I think that we are at a great time in our community right now. And it's credit to Mayor Derrick, it's a credit to the fact that we have two local papers, and, and the business community and the, and the folks who are here tonight. It's not about the pay you get for, I mean, it, it is appreciated, first of all, that there is something. But I value more the extreme amount of trust that people place in each of us to do things that matter to them, you know, whether it's a, a park project, whether it's a, a streetlight getting fixed, whether it's a flag being replaced, because, you know, Mr. Carney's been texting me and saying, hey, what do they, I sent him that flag. Did they put it up yet? Yes, Mr. Carney. I'm letting them know that, that it's, it's ready to go. Whether it's Derrick or myself as mayor, we're going to be fine. We really are. But I think government also can have more transparency, as I've tried to provide for, so that there is a level of accountability. I think people expect that in our community. And I, I think that from the standpoint of mayor, or council member, or citizen, we all should strive for that together, because whatever's happening outside of Honesdale, and whatever bigger forces are at work, we're going to, I think, have a lot more success by doing things together and trusting one another. Thank you.
Thank you so much to everyone for being here tonight. Thank you to both of our candidates for mayor, for participating. Thank you to all of the candidates for our council for participating. Honestly, the, no it takes trust in the process to come out to an event like this, and I really appreciate that trust being the best The River Reporter. Quick reminders before people leave. November 4, municipal election. Vote for all of these lovely people you heard talking tonight, if you live in Honesdale. If not, then you can't, you will be voting for your own candidate. And there is material for The River Reporter on the table back there, including the ability to sign up for our free newsletters, one on Wednesdays with news, one on Sundays that's more arts and leisure-focused. And if I'm forgetting anything, shout out to the room.
Thanks, Liam.
Thank you so much for participating.
Cheers.
I was gonna say, like, I've done this for hours, multiple times, so this is a little different sense.
Thank you both for the discussion. Y'all kept it real, and I really appreciate the opportunity.